Okay, welcome, everybody. Thanks for waiting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Feng?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Wong?
Present.
And Chair Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Joe is absent.
Thank you. Agenda review. Does anybody have any changes or questions?
None.
We're good? All righty. Minutes. We have two sets to review. January 17? Oh, seven, seven, sorry. Anybody have any changes to that one?
Start with seven?
Seven, sorry.
Start with January 7?
Yes.
So on the Commissioner comments, I think we discussed several things about how the projects was able to meet the findings listed on the approval based on how the equipment is actually, that was being proposed, was being proposed in an open space area rather than just a residential area. The proximities of it is away from the residential properties and how many feet and distance away and how all the dense vegetation surrounding that proposed site to be built with all those equipments and how they were being screened away from the street and how those trees surrounding it created a screening effect was a very unique situation and that's why those things were approved and they were not something to be used as a precedence for future approvals and future applications. I think some of those things were important enough that they should be noted on the minutes.
Sure. We'd be glad to go back and listen to that and beef the minutes up if that's the Commission's pleasure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so we'll set these aside for now. See them perhaps next time. Okay, January 24. Okay, Kathy has no comments.
I have no comments also.
Okay.
We're all good.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. January 24th comments.
I'd like to second that if I can figure this out.
The machine will do it. There we go. And your votes. The minutes from January 24th are approved with Commissioner Quigg abstaining if it would move to the little white circle. One more.
There you go.
There you go. All righty. Public communication. This is the time set aside for anybody who would like to address the Planning Commission on a topic that is in our purview but is not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any speaker slips? Nobody? Not for general public comment, just on projects? Okay. Okay, we'll close that and move on. Old business, we have none. Number seven, public hearings. The first one up is 503 Anita Lane. A design review to allow the construction of a second-story residence and a side setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second-floor side setbacks of an existing single-story residence in the single-family residential R1 zone. Linda, staff report.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I apologize. I meant to say something during the agenda review. We do, item C this evening, the Gateway at Millbrae Station project. The staff is recommending that that would be continued to a date certain of March 14th. And so if that is the Commission's desire, I was hoping that maybe we could just maybe move that up if there's any members of the audience that were here that didn't want to sit through the other two hearings in case we are going to continue that item, so.
Okay. Mike?
The 14th has a quorum?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so...
So it's staff's recommendation that we continue that to March 14th. That would be Thursday, next Thursday, March 14th at 7:00 PM. Yes. And we, staff will follow through with MCTV, so I apologize for the snafu here this evening, but that would be our recommendation.
So do we pause on A and go move to C for a second?
Yes, I think that'd be appropriate.
103 Anita, just one moment. So C, the Gateway at Millbrae Station project. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
I think that'd be appropriate. And then if there is any member of the public that wanted to speak, we could certainly hear from them.
Okay. The Planning Commission review of a design review permit application to consider design aspects of the Gateway at Millbrae Station transit-oriented design project pursuant to Millbrae Municipal Code 10.05.2500C. The applicant, Republic Millbrae LLC, obtained approval of a development agreement to develop a TOD project consisting of a six-story building with 151,583 square feet of offices on the top three floors over three levels of parking with 22,534 square feet of ground floor retail. Number two is 300 market-rate housing units and 20 units affordable to moderate-income persons in a seven-story building with parking on the first two floors and 13,749 square feet of ground floor retail. Number three, 80 affordable units in a five-story building. And four, 164-room hotel and 700, oh, sorry, 7,840 square feet of ground floor retail in a five-story building on a site located north of Millbrae Avenue, east of the rail lines of the Millbrae-Bart site, and south of the High Line Canal and Bayside Manor neighborhood in the Transit Oriented Development Zoning District of the Millbrae Station area-specific plan. It's a public hearing and we'd like to continue this.
Right. And then one more comment. I appreciate you reading all of that. And I just wanted to be clear that the reason for the continuance is that the applicant and staff have been working on getting much more complete plans. This will be the public hearing before the Planning Commission, so it was imperative that we had all of the requisite materials for those plans and we're working with the applicant to make sure that all the best information is available for Planning Commission at that next hearing.
So they are looking for an action?
I'm sorry?
They're looking for an action on that hearing.
On the 14th, it will be the public hearing for formal recommendation.
So that I would consider the staff report. Does the applicant want to say anything? Are they still here? Oh, they left. Okay, good. Oh, there you are. I couldn't, you're the only person I can't see in the room. Do you want to say anything else? Okay. Were there any speaker slips for this item? Okay. We'll do public comment now, then. Stephen Green? Jump to the microphone, please. Yep, over here. Thank you.
So I guess the majority of the, everything will be said at the next Commission meeting on the 14th, but just so you can hear it multiple times, I'm a young adult who has moved to Millbrae for the amazing access to transit and the walkable community that you have downtown. I take the train to work. My wife takes Bart. And the TOD, both of the TODs under review, but specifically the Gateway project are the kind of place that I would like to live in Millbrae. Right now, my apartment building was probably built in the 50s. Not all of the outlets in my apartment are grounded, for example, because of Millbrae's aging multi-unit housing stock. Choices are limited for people like me who would like to move and enjoy your community but can't. So just all speed or exigence you can, you know, apply to this process would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else? Okay, the public comment for tonight, we're done with tonight. We'll do more later, don't worry. Okay, so do we have a motion to continue? Oh, clear the board, please. It's okay. Wait, Kathy. Okay, now.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing on Gateway at Millbrae Station project to Thursday, the 14th of March. It is not a scheduled meeting, however, I want to make sure everybody understands it is on a Thursday at 7:00 on March the 14th.
Second. Lovely. Your votes? Motion passes, motion passes 4-0. We'll see you on the 14th. Okay, now back to 503 Anita Lane. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant for 503 Anita Lane is requesting design review to allow construction of a second-story residence and side setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setback, side setback of an existing single-story residence in a single-family residential zoning district. The project is located in the Meadow Glen neighborhood of Millbrae, approximately two blocks south of Green Hills Country Club. Anita Lane is a horseshoe-shaped neighborhood street connecting to Geraldine Drive. The existing residence located on a 5,000-square-foot interior lot was built in 1949. The one-story, single-family home is owned, single-family residential, and identified in the general plan as low-density residential. This slide demonstrates the property line. The red, the site, site plan shows the red perimeter line as the property line. The lighter blue is the setback requirements. On the side, you have five feet to the sides. The rear, you have a 10-foot setback which is coterminous with an easement. And then the front setback is 20 feet, which you can see there is a existing non-conforming condition where the house extends into the front setback. The yellow or orange line represents the rear third of the lot where the applicant maintains at least 1,000 square feet of open space. The existing structure is a 1,430-square-foot house with three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, kitchen, dining area, living room, covered entry, and four closets, including an attached two-car garage. The total square footage of the house is 1,871 square feet. The project would convert part of an existing deck into a stairway for a new 387-square-foot second-floor addition and add approximately 382 square feet to the existing ground floor of the house. This is a slide of the proposed addition. The red is the additional square footage that would be added and the green is the existing house. The red in the middle is the second-floor addition. As noted, the ground floor addition is 382 square feet and the second-floor addition is 387 square feet for a total new addition of 769 square feet. The lot coverage is currently to, proposed to be 2,301 square feet, which is 47% of the lot size. And the floor-area ratio is proposed to be 2,688 square feet, which is 54% of the FAR on the lot size. As previously mentioned, the requests for a second-floor setback exception on both sides are represented with the yellow, with the purple lines. And the lot width is 50 feet, which requires a seven-foot second-floor setback. The proposed work includes converting one ground-floor bedroom into a family room, the addition of a new bedroom, a new deck with a roof, and a second floor including a suite bedroom, full bathroom, and wet bar. The existing roof pitch is 5 and 12, and the proposed roof would be a combination of 5 and 12 pitch to match the existing ground-floor roof and 3 and 12 inch, 3 and 12 pitch roof on the second-floor addition. The proposed alteration of the interior and addition of the second floor that exceeds the minimum required setback of seven feet for a lot 50 feet wide requires Planning Commission approval. The chart is taken from the staff report and identifies all of the existing and proposed requirements. This slide shows the proposed front elevation on the top and at the bottom it's the existing. This is the north elevation, which provides the view of the deck as proposed and the existing. This is the opposite side, which is a south elevation. The second floor, if you note, has no windows. That was part of the, the design mitigation that would affect any of the neighbor property. The ground floor shows the existing. This is the rear elevation. It shows how even with the second-floor addition, the setback from the rear and the front of the property line demonstrates that there appears to be a setback, even though the requested setback is, is actually flush with the ground floor. In accordance with the City of Millbrae's Community Development Department's submittal requirements for residential development, a total of five proof-of-neighbor consultation forms from the adjacent residences have been submitted. One was returned in support of the project and one was returned opposing the project. The remaining three responses were not returned. On January 9, 2019, staff mailed a letter confirming with the resident owners of each adjacent residence that they received the notice of proposed application. One owner responded to staff via phone and confirmed their support for a new total of two neighbors in support of the project. Staff attempted to contact the neighbor in opposition of the proposed work, leaving messages on three separate occasions, however, there was no response. On February 27th and March 1st of this year, two adjacent neighbors visited staff at City Hall to review the project and provide information on their opposition to the project. Staff encouraged both neighbors to attend tonight's public hearing and provide public comment. Staff is aware that this, there are some outstanding issues with Airbnb rentals. We are working with the applicant on that. Staff recommends that Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application to allow construction of a second-story residence and the side setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second-floor side setbacks of an existing single-story residence in a single-family residential zoning district, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff right now? Sure.
So then basically, bedroom three, which I guess is going to be converted to a family room, has been enlarged.
Yes, I believe that the, the applicant would probably be the most appropriate to answer the interior questions regarding the planning zoning issues.
That's why it's black. Okay. And maybe I can ask the applicant also because, and maybe you can help me. When you're looking at page 1.0, it looks like the addition is coming halfway through the garage. However, when you look at, what happened to five? Oh, they're all out of order. 5.0, the drawing makes it look like it's only to the beginning of the garage. What am I missing? Can someone help me?
Sure. So to answer your first question about the existing bedroom number three, so that is being enlarged, as you can see on sheet A30, so it's now would be extending more towards the rear of the lot, past, past the existing bathroom.
Is that the rear of the lot or the side of the?
That's the rear, correct.
Right. This is the front.
Yeah, that's the rear. That's to the rear. So if you're looking at sheet A3.0, on the top right drawing.
Right. But you're looking at the house like this. That's the back, but this is the side. My point is on the side.
That's compliant, right?
Yes.
Yes, on the side, the setback is compliant.
Right. That's only a single-story addition. So the second, the second-floor addition where the setback request, exception request would occur is only on, in the middle of the house where the second story exists. The addition to the rear is just a single-story addition.
Okay. And it's still a five-foot setback?
Correct.
I mean, a five-foot.
Right, on the ground floor setback, yes.
But...
That's okay.
But when you're looking on page 1.0, it looks like the second story goes halfway to one car garage. I mean, it, it looks like it's more over. Whereas when you look, and I think I understand what happened, but it's not, maybe needs to be redrawn a little bit. Yet, when you're looking at 5.0, the second story looks like it's at the beginning of the garage. Am I going crazy? It does not look like this.
It does.
And here. So according to that, it looks like it's here. I know, but that's not what this looks like.
The longitudinal section.
Well, here.
Like it's not overhanging in the garage, right? It doesn't look like it is. This is the back of the garage.
Right. It comes all the way to here.
Where?
But when you look at the house, this looks like it's way over to the right side, whereas on this one, I'm sure it's just the way it's drawn. This is at the beginning. So your two cars are like this and like this.
I'll just present it on the screen so people can see what you're discussing.
We'll do that.
On figure A5.0.
5.0. I'm sure it's just needing to be redrawn, but... The bottom one? The bottom picture there?
Yes.
Okay. When you look at the front, it appears that it's halfway into the garage.
Right. I think what you would...
Whereas here, this wall is all the way at the beginning.
Right. I just want to point out that this is actually a section and not the elevation. So you probably want to look at page 4.0, I believe is the correct sheet for the elevation.
Okay. Yeah, that one looks more like what I was imagining until I looked at 5.0 and then I'm going, okay.
Yeah, and so that's, and that's a longitudinal, longitudinal section. So it's actually as if you're looking at it from a side view cut through the home.
I know, because I'm looking at that picture and I'm thinking, and the one in the front, and I'm thinking, why is the setback not showing? But...
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else right now?
Yes.
On page three of your report, based on the issues and analysis, you show second-floor setback south and north both at zero when they were required at seven?
Yes.
And when I look at the plan, it seems like they provide some sort of a setback, but is that being measured from the previous plan, the existing condition?
So, so again, for the, the ground-floor setback, the, the setback is measured from the property line to the ground-floor exterior wall.
Yes.
For the second floor, it's measured from the exterior wall inward.
The first-floor exterior wall.
The first-floor exterior wall, correct.
Compared to the second-floor exterior wall proposed.
Right. What they're proposing is zero, they don't have any setback, that they build directly on top of the ground-floor wall. So what they've done to mitigate that is to provide a deck that allows additional setback from that area, that particular location on the side of the house that gives a little more generous setback, even though it is a deck, it is livable space. It allows a little more space so that staff felt that that was an appropriate measure to take to allow that zero setback for the second floor.
On the one side?
On both sides.
There's a deck on both sides?
And there was, and the reason for that is be, and the reason that it appears on on A4.0 where you showed the frontage, the facade of the building, it seems like there is a setback on a second story because it's being camouflaged by how wide the front of the house is.
Precisely. Staff worked quite closely with the architect who came up with that concept. We felt that it was a very positive solution to, to that situation.
So it's just a number that works out to be zero, but in reality, when you look at the front of the house, it does look like there's a second.
It appears as if there's a second, that there is a setback.
Very well. Thanks.
So also, if there, if they did enclose that deck and they built the side of the bottom floor to be in line with the bottom, rest of the bottom floor and a five-foot setback from the fence, so if the, if the bottom floor, if the deck was enclosed up to the maximum, then the setback for the second story required would be, tell me if I'm wrong, six feet inset from the wall?
Yes.
But instead, they still have a four-foot setback, so they still, even if they had the bottom floor enclosed, they would, we would typically require them to have a six-foot setback and they have a, they're applying for a four-foot setback, so that would still, wouldn't meet requirement if, if there was a bottom floor there for the setback.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Can we have the applicant come up? Are they here?
Yeah, dear members of the Planning Committee, I'm Yang Chen, the designer for this project. I can answer all your, most of your questions as much as possible as I can do.
Can, do you want to go over the project and explain?
Yes, the goal, this project, basically, my client come to me talking about he needed like a certain kind of living space expansion for the house they live in there. And because they, in the future, they have a baby right now and that is pregnant, he's going to have another baby coming by end of, by soon, like August or something this year. And their parents from China will probably come here to help to bring up the child and something, so the need of living space is relatively urgent for them, so we started processing this design. And since the songling have certain kind of regulation to guideline in the ground-floor addition, so we need to maximize the living space for the family to propose a second-story additions. And to best accommodate with the city requirement, we figure out the, since the frontage of the house looks like wider, so the second story will try to use the middle section of the house to create a second story to accommodate, accommodate with the design and the neighborhood characters of the house. So this comes out like this kind of elevations and the second story and... And also, in consider of the daylight of the living space, we put the big windows for the staircase so that will allow sufficient daylight to get into the house. So it's very accommodated with the current design and the current greenhouse requirement, those things. So this is how we approach for this kind of proposal for the elevation and the square footage and the living space requirement.
Thank you. Questions for him?
So basically, you enlarged bedroom three that's going to be the family room, and then you're building the other one to match up with it. Is that correct?
Yes. Basically, because the pathway, we want to maintain the third bedroom, but because the pathway for the rear side of expansions, that's why, because that will be considered like in the future, the granny will live in there and that they have more privacy room for the grandlies living in the same area. That's why we doing the expansion, additional new bedroom in the back of the house and that the existing bedroom three will convert to the family rooms.
Did you consider using the setback? Because the top bedroom is pretty good size.
Yeah. The top bedroom mainly the owner will live in by themselves.
Right. But that whole area is fairly generous with the...
Three hundred some, three hundred eighty square feet, yeah.
Yeah. With, but then there's the other room. Is there not the other room right next to it? There's the wet bar?
Yes. Those are the second-story room, yeah.
Right. So that's like the size, a hundred square feet could be another bedroom. And then you've got eighteen by twelve.
No. Because the bedroom is not considered as a second bedroom over there on the second floor because the... There's a garial on the stairway is basically is open. We need to bring in all the daylight to the second floor. So it's not as, most people think this could be a second bedroom, but if you have two bedroom over there, the space will be very, very uncomfortable for the, as the master bedroom size, very uncomfortable. That's why I decided to use a garial for the wet bar area, make it open and plenty of light get into the rooms, to the office or like a wet bar space and the master bedroom have another windows over there. This is the concept of the balance of the lighting and the spacing use.
Thank you.
Mr. Chen, can you point out all the access for the house and what you envision the circulation to the in-law area?
It's not in-law area, but looks like, but actually it's not planned as you see in-law because we just want to provide more private space for the grandlies living there.
Can we pull up A3.0 on the screen?
3.0.
So over there, you know, when you're looking at the existing, there's a dead end of a hallway over there to get into the small bathroom. So basically, and the one side go to the bedroom number three, the one side go to the bathroom. So that's why we need to expand for another room for the granny living. And then we keep the existing pathway to get into bedroom number three. That's why we convert the bedroom number three to the family room. And then in the rear side, we get one full bathroom and bedrooms.
So just my interpretation of this is that I see on bedroom number three, there's a sliding door on the rear accessing from the left side there on the top?
There's a door over there also, the family room, I make a new door to go to the deck over there to, for the backyard access. So this will create a more convenient access around the common area using all the thing.
And then you also have a slider, another on the other side of the...
Those are come from the kitchens. Those are existing exit over there.
So there's two sliding doors in that one bedroom? Sixty-six by sixty slider?
No. That is the window, sliding windows, not the sliding door. That's which means it's sliding.
Okay. So those are both windows? There's no...
Yes. Not the sliding door.
Okay. And then, so there's no doors to these new...
The door only goes through the deck.
Okay. Okay. And that door from the deck, the only way to get to the upstairs is...
Is go through the main house.
Through the main house? Okay.
And also, actually, on the side that they have a door, we create a new door on the facing to the front side. That door is from the living room access to the backyard.
Okay. So then there's only two access to the houses through the deck and through the front entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
And so there's no way to get to the backyard?
No, no, no. The door through the deck is go to the backyard.
Upbound?
Yes. Yes. No. There's no door directly from the bedroom go to the backyard.
So I guess the point that I'm getting at is that these units with the new family room and the new bedroom, it's not intended to be converted to like an in-law or...
No, no. Not intended.
Airbnb-type rental, so forth?
Actually, as far as the owner told me, currently, they run a little bit Airbnb, but they will comply all the city ordinance and all the city requirements. Also, because she's pregnant right now, also is new immigrant, it's relatively hard to get the job right now. So the Airbnb will part of a supplemental income for her to accommodate the payment for the mortgage and all the other things. That's why they run a little beyond that. But this will be only like a short period running. Once the baby comes out, you need rooms. It's not convenient for those kind of business. Then they will stop on that.
Who lives in the house right now? The person that is...
The owner, owner itself, the living over there.
And he's the one that's applying?
They have couples. He's a couples and plus one young kids right now. And there's another baby will come in this year.
Okay. And can we move over to A4.1 to the north elevation?
The elevation.
Okay. There's very large, is that a window with two large windows on the second floor?
Yeah. One large window is for the master bedroom. The bigger one is for the stair so we can bring in plenty of light get into the house.
Can you call out the dimensions on that larger window?
That one is like almost eight feet by six feet. Pretty big.
And the other window is...
The other window is like a five and a half by five and a half. So please stand up for the egress and the master bedroom size.
So... Yeah. So basically, if I understand correctly, that north elevation, those stairs are from the covered patio?
It's open patio, but we need to enclose a portion of the patio to make a stair go up.
Right.
Second floor.
So that means that looks into your next-door neighbor?
What?
No.
Yeah. That window is on top of, yeah. Is the, we put a new window on the second floor, yeah.
The window there...
Existing, they have a sliding door over there.
It's not looking at the front of the house?
Yeah. No. It's only on the side, yeah.
Okay.
Right. Have you given consideration for the neighbor?
Yeah.
And does the neighbor have a second floor? And have you checked the alignment of the windows so you're not looking directly in?
No. It's not looking directly. We check it, yeah. Basically, the stair window, you are not looking directly through the neighbor because you have a stair spacing over there. But the master bedroom, you have a certain kind of setback over there. On this side, you have enough setback, so...
Have you considered maybe skylight or other options to the large window?
No. Besides the daylight requirement, window requirement, we also need to meet the fire department's egress requirements. That's why this window will be proposed over there.
Which one?
So that window N on page 4.1
Yeah.
Is only five feet next to the next-door neighbor? No?
No. No. Actually, it's more than five. It's about ten feet. And then for the master bedroom, it goes like almost fifteen feet
On the other side.
To the labor line. If you go back to A3.0...
It's like five feet setback. Five-foot minimum setback to the house and then another four feet.
Pretty close to. I wouldn't want somebody looking.
If you go back, I think go for, go to A6.0, you can see the roof lines over there, the hatch, the roof, the roof area, and you can see the second-floor wall over there. So for the bedroom window, have pretty much setback distance over there. It's more than ten feet.
Which page you want us to look at again? Mr. Chen, which page you said we should look at?
A6.0.
I got 5.0. I don't get 6.0.
The 6.0 is the roof plan and then on the hatch area is the second-floor roof and you can see the wall.
Page one. I got page six and then I got page three.
Yeah.
That was my question.
I think for overall, second-floor views of the project is more clear on that drawing.
A6.0, the roof plan.
I don't think it's in the set. It's page two. That's what I was looking for when I was trying to find. And then I found six.
Yeah. It's not, sorry. It's not on order. Yeah. The publisher didn't put like this way.
Where's my east, west, north and south?
Do you have anything? Any other questions for him right now?
So even if the window is here, it's going to be next to your next-door neighbor?
Yes. We understand that.
I don't know if the neighbor will speak to that or not, but I personally have issues with a large window like that without being some kind of a frosted window or something looking into the next-door neighbor that close. So it's ten feet, maybe a little bit more. You're right on top of someone.
Yeah. I understand that. Yeah.
I mean, it could be mitigated with frosted glass or there's a lot of things you could do.
We can do tinted glass on that one. We can do the things accommodated with the labor's concern. We can do that.
And what exactly will people see when they look from the outside into that window? Will they see like the bedroom wall? Or would they see stairs going up or...
It looks like it's all open.
No. They couldn't see the stair going up because the window is basically on the second-floor level.
Right.
So you are not able to stay stairs, steps on the stair.
Would be like the bedroom, yes?
It wouldn't be the bedroom. It would be the wet bar area.
Only the wet bar. You only see the garial of the stair and the wet bar.
Just an enhanced landing more than anything. Do you have anything else right now?
No. Nothing right now. I would tend to think that you could do your setback at five feet. I think we only need five-feet setback, don't we?
Right. Just to clarify, there's a five-foot setback on the ground floor that's measured from the property line to the exterior wall. And they have, they have that. They have an additional setback for the deck. So when they're requesting, that's why they're requesting the second-floor exception so they can build directly on top of that exterior wall to allow that generous setback which provides that buffer between the neighbors.
How wide is the deck?
Existing is seven feet. Right now, we reduce to four feet.
Yes. So they use...
From the side of the property.
The property.
The property line meets...
From the first, from the first-floor wall nine.
Long is it? How wide is it?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The Y, the Y is about four feet and the long is ten feet.
Thank you. Perfect. Four feet.
It's four feet. You're welcome. Isn't it supposed to be five feet from the property line?
No.
We're talking about two different things.
So it's... You know, I can explain it. Yeah. The stair go down to the deck, to the property line is only three feet. Actually, two feet. And then from the first-floor line to the property line is five feet.
So where's the three feet?
The three feet is the stair you from the deck going down.
Through the chair.
So the setback on the ground floor meets the minimum, the five feet. And then when you go up onto the second floor where we're talking about this stairwell and this window, that's an additional four feet beyond the five. So it's a total of nine feet from the side property line.
When you're looking at it on the...
The window along the stairs. And then the bedroom window is several feet behind that, further in away from the property line.
Correct.
I don't suppose that we have any city code or guidelines for sizing of windows facing neighboring properties? We'll have to put that in our residential design guidelines if I think about that.
Yeah. I think we have been concerned with the label on this side, on the window-facing side. They do not have any objection on that.
One more question?
Go ahead.
If I may, the applicant, Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Okay. Look at how you just, you know, the garage, you didn't change anything on the garage. But there, I noticed one change is that you put all your utilities, such as your laundry and your water heater outside in the new deck that you proposing?
Yes.
Why?
The existing garage is not fully comply with the current military code regarding the garage size or something. So if you put, if you, the previous put over there is not really comply with the code because the garage depths need a twenty-feet minimum clearance for the car parking inside. And right now, the existing one, when you put the laundry unit over there, the clearance is not able to meet for twenty feet. This is why we have to relocate the laundry, put outside on the deck area.
Okay. So your plan is scale properly?
Yes.
So from the back wall, where there's a longer wall compared to where the garage door is, I scaled it at twenty-three feet?
Twenty-three is not enough for, to put a laundry unit over there. You probably need a minimum twenty-four to twenty-five feet. Then you can get enough clearance for a car to park in there.
Our requirement for garage is rock-to-rock twenty feet. And an extra three feet should probably be enough for you to put your laundry units for extra three feet. I've built many three-by-five laundry closets in my life. What I consider here is that, frankly, I don't care where you put your laundry, but the reality is when you put them outside, it creates a noise issue for your neighbor when you're using it, whether you use it at night or use it overnight, whatever it is that you use it. It could create a bit of an issue for your neighbor. I don't see a problem with you currently, where your current location of all that laundry utilities are, as well as your water heater. I don't see an issue being where it is today. I don't think we would want you to put them outside. And it doesn't, these are designed to be home appliances. They're not supposed to weather in an element. I mean, I know... I mean, I know this is, it's a roofed deck, but you don't necessarily put them, want to put them outside either. The moisture is going to kill your motors. It's something for you to consider. I'm not a big fan of seeing all these laundry units on the outside of the property.
Yeah, if the city okay on that, we definitely were willing to put it back in the garage for the laundry unit.
Staff? Ms., Ms. Robinson? 23 feet is sufficient lengthwise for a garage with laundry built in, right?
Correct.
So if your measurement is correct and when I scale your plan, if that is in fact a correct representation of your site condition, you should have your laundry inside your garage.
Okay, we can, we can change that.
Okay. Just one small comment, Mr. Chan. I read many plans and this one is extremely difficult to follow, especially on your A3.0. I mean, not to mention that the pages are all wrongly numbered. When you put a site condition, existing site condition and a proposed condition, and then when those two plans are skewed, it's pretty hard to follow. Especially when you have no grid, especially when you have no grid lines and it doesn't show the property lines in those, um, floor plan. Of the existing floor plan and the proposed floor plan, it gets pretty difficult to follow, right? Especially when you're asking for an exceptions on a second floor setback. So, just one comment that I think you might wanna be a little bit more detail oriented on that. We can leave the rest for others until public comment.
Yes. Mm-hmm, microphone.
So...
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on. So, there is, both sides of the house have stairway.
You mean the second floor?
It looks like there's a down here where you've put the roof deck or those stairs that says "down" on page 3.0. And then on the other side, there's also look like stairs. And that's where the window is, right? The big window on the left side?
Yes, yes. So, you're looking for A5.0 is the cross section. So the stair shows on the graphic one is the interior stair where you're turning and going up to the second floor. Is the internal stair.
When you're looking at the proposed floor plan on 3.0.
Yes.
We have, there's two sets of stairway from the house down to the floor, to, to the concrete level? Both sides.
Yeah, those are the decks.
The one that's gonna have the large window is on the left side that then there's gonna be the stairway to go upstairs.
Yes.
But it's the right side that we're covering the roof so he could extend the house. I am... Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner, because I was having a hard time. Yes. And then the, the one page that was the other side.
Well, is there, is there a north elevation that might help Catherine understand that?
The north elevation?
Yeah, there is, way in the corner over here. It's very...
North profile view?
I don't know, and here's north, going this way.
Yeah.
So this is the south profile view, is there a north profile view?
Yeah, this is what we consider because when we draw an architectural drawing is not directly oriented with the real orientations. So we use like a drawing mapping orientation to indicate whoever is close to, to the north side, we call it a north elevations.
So, you've, you've put north and north on page 4.1. But it's actually, I don't think it's north.
No, the, because when you have a 45 degree angle facing to your house, so we needed decided where the north would be, where the south would be, where the east, west. So, because when you draw the elevations, you will calling on that. So basically, in my designs, I always use the frontage facing down, the entrance of building. And based on that, we draw out the north, east, south, west. So where were the real north direction pointing to? We're using that area as a north elevations.
Any more questions, Commissioner Feng?
Sorry. Looking at your site plan, is that an accurate representation of the current condition by scale?
Yeah.
A1.0. The proposed site plan. You show a deck on the northeast corner. As an existing deck. How far is it away from property line?
It's about 3 feet over there.
3 feet away from property line.
The, the age of the deck, the, the garage of the deck, but if you're looking for the building's wall.
No, not building wall, top of the deck.
The garage is about 3.
3 feet away from the property line.
Yeah.
What is the material being used to build a deck? Is that wood?
Redwood.
Redwood? Staff, have we checked the permit on that?
There is an existing deck that is proposed to be removed and replaced with the, the plan that's shown.
So, let me rephrase my question. There is an existing deck that's only 3 feet away from the property line and is made of combustible materials.
That is to be removed.
And replaced.
Replaced with what is shown here, which is within the 5 foot setback.
Yes, and it's gonna be replaced with what material?
I believe he said wood.
Applicant? So you're gonna, you're gonna demolish an old deck that is in the required setback and you're gonna put in a new deck within that 5 foot setback area with combustible material. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's compliant, the proposed new deck is compliant with the existing 5 foot setback. He's, he's not putting the new deck 3 feet from the property line, he's putting the new deck 5 feet.
Oh, is it 5?
A smaller deck will be installed.
Correct.
The building northeast wall is gonna be 5 foot away from the property line. The building wall is gonna be 5 feet away from the property line, is that correct?
Are you looking at the rear of the property, the new single?
Northeast, I'm looking at the northeast wall. If you face the building, I'm looking at the left hand side.
Start talking left and right now.
Northeast wall. If his bearing on the plan is correct, it's the northeast wall.
Right. Yes, those are, that's 5 feet from the property line.
No.
Oh, 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 I see.
1.0.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
The left side.
Yes.
I think it's easier to go left than right.
And you can put 3 feet, you can... This is existing. So it's an existing non-conforming and he's not exacerbating that situation, so it's allowed to remain.
Wait. My original question to you is, was that, sorry. My original question to you was, was the deck previously permitted? Here's where I'm getting at.
Yes.
You have a deck made of combustible material within a 5 foot setback area. The 5 foot setback was created a long time ago for the purpose of fire rating.
Yes.
Okay, so there's combustible material within that 5 foot setback. That's an issue.
I would need to confirm with the building official on that.
Okay.
Because I do think that we, we do have a provision in the zoning code that allows stairways, some, some architectural features to exist within that, but not shorter than 3 feet. So if you have a step that, that extends into the setback, you're allowed to do that as long as it's not an architectural feature.
I think that's arguable, okay. I think we'll, we'll discuss it a little bit.
Oh, sorry, which, uh, I have it right here. It's, it says, "Open uncovered raised porches, landings or outside stairways may protect, may project not closer than 3 feet to any interior side lot, lot line, not more than 2 feet into any required exterior side yard and not more than 6 feet into any required front or rear."
So 3 feet is allowed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
But we will certainly follow up to ensure that that deck was legally permitted in the first place.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I'm noticing on 1.0, on the left side, which is where I think Commissioner Feng is dealing with, the one that's gonna have the large window. There's something there that says, "Area request for setback exception."
Yeah, that's the northeast wall.
And then there's also, "Area request for setback exception," looking on the right side.
That's the southwest wall.
Right.
Okay? Because they're building it, because they're building it directly below the first floor new wall, right? That's why they're requesting the second, the second story setback exception.
Okay.
All right.
All for now? Thank you for now.
Thank you.
We'll move to public comment now. First up is Norm Lee. Do you have the timer up? Hold on one second. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So maximum 3 minutes, please.
Okay.
My name is Norm Lee and I reside at 507 Anita Lane along with my wife and 2 children who are 8 and 10 years old. I don't object to the plan here to erect a second floor. But my concern is what the additional space will be used for. Currently, the owner is renting all 3 bedrooms on Airbnb. One room states that it can accommodate up to 6 guests and the other 2 rooms can accommodate 2 each. So on a fully occupied day, there will be 10 guests at the house at one time, which violates the city's occupancy limits of 8 people. Another concern is the owner states on her house rules listed on Airbnb that guests cannot park in the garage or on the driveway, which again violates the city's ordinance that onsite parking must be provided to renters. Because our street is narrow, cars are parked partially up on the sidewalk and with more cars parked on the sidewalks, it just makes it much more difficult to maneuver around than while we're walking on sidewalk. We along with other neighbors are concerned for the safety of our families. About 2 weeks ago, I witnessed a man walk up the street directly across from my house. He put a dirty pad on the asphalt and he did a, a headstand for a few minutes. I didn't understand what's happening and I just watched him. And then I, I watched him go back down the street and he entered the house at 503 Anita Lane. Incidents like these concern me. We do not know who is coming and going in our neighborhood. The extra foot traffic and vehicles on our street is a concern and potential hazard to us and especially our kids. I'd like to bring the attention that currently there's no permit issued for short-term rentals for this property. And also, this, this, these owners should be aware of the ordinances because currently on Airbnb, they're renting 23 homes and they have over 1,000 reviews. So that's their primary business. I don't think it's supplementing anything else as far as offsetting mortgages or anything like that. So I just want to bring that to your attention tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Yvonne Wong.
Hi, I'm the resident of 505 Anita Lane. We understand that it is the owner's right to develop the property. However, we need to raise our concern of privacy and safety. First of all, we have not seen the 3 dimension of the building plan ourselves. That I want to make sure the sunlight, privacy and views on my house are not impact. I also need to bring up the privacy and safety, especially the subject owner is operating the premises as Airbnb since July 2016, which is supported by the Airbnb reference. The transient renters are not allowed to park on their driveway with a fine of minimum $25. So we have to fight constantly with the plenty of so-called street parking spaces stated on the housing rule, on the, on the ad. Our family also have few cars, so we're constantly fighting for the space. We also annoyed by the intimate noise at night caused by the renters or the party of the house. Sometime the renters smell marijuana on the side as well. I would like to also submit my neighbor, David McLaughlin, who is out of town, he's on 508, to the city as well. Given the professional operation of the owner's Airbnb for 23 rooms they operated, we do have the concern the house will be leased out as total of 5 rooms upon completion, though we don't have that proof. So as a conclusion, I would like to request the following. We need to review the building plan to know the location of the windows and distance between our property for a new expanded room and second story room. And also all the setback exception, we never have a chance to view that until now. And also, we have windows facing 503 directly, so we want to bring that up. Secondly, we want to exercise our right. We will into strictly monitoring any Airbnb operations with hosted or non-hosted operation and checking on the parking requirement posed by the owner to report to the co-enforcement department diligently. The last, the building department should require, is required to make sure the existing owner is fully in compliance before issuing the approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have all the information about the listing, the rent, leasing schedule of the property and what property they have under operation here for the city's review.
Next up is Robert Bonney.
Hi, I'm the neighbor that you guys were discussing on 501 Anita Lane. And before I came here tonight, my primary concern was the light, the natural light that we were gonna lose on that side of the house. We only have 1 window on that side of the house, which is a dining room, you know, dining room area. And we have a smaller window up on the, on the top. So there's not much light on that side of the house. And my concern was that when they go up with the staircase, it's gonna take out a lot of the natural light during the course of the day. We'll get less and less natural light and have to, you know, stay a little bit in a, in a shadier part of the house. We moved here 25 years. 25 years ago, and actually this month, and the neighbor that you were discussing before had a deck built, and that deck goes to the fence line. It goes exactly to the fence line. There is no space between that deck and the fence line. I've been over their house before they moved, and there is no three feet, there can't be three feet, from that fence that we put up together to his deck where the stairs and everything are. So I just want to make that clear. I don't know how that's a three-foot space. I just, maybe I'm not an architect, and you know, there's something I'm missing, but it just, to me, it's not a three-foot space. And again, just, you know, to reiterate everyone else's concerns, you know, we moved here 25 years ago. It's a great place to raise your kids, and we just don't want to, I guess, have a place that's an-in-out hotel next door, basically. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian Lee?
Hi. So I live at 502 Anita Lane. So I guess my neighbors has previously addressed the same concern that I have already. So basically, the main concern is adding another story of short-term housing. If the owner is to be occupying it as a primary home, we have no concern. We welcome them. But it's just adding more short-term rentals, because multiple, we have multiple incidents that we have strangers trying to open or ring our doorbell, thinking we are the Airbnb house, at very late at night, like 10:00 or 11:00 p.m., which, you know, got us very worried, and also woke us, woke us up and our daughter as well. So, and also, we've seen strangers smoking on our blocks. That's also another safety concern. So that's all I want to talk about.
Thank you. Diane Green?
I live at 506 Anita Lane, which is across from 503. But my biggest concern is the change in the neighborhood for the younger children.
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
I'm not used to this. And if there was a guarantee that all this, that this family was going to move in and live there, and the grandparents and that, but there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. And with the additional two bedrooms, that would create more living space for rental. And the parking on the street, the garbage is strewn all over because they're not allowed to cook there. So it's a lot of takeout. So it's just not a nice atmosphere. And if there were additional people, you know, it's going to be more, more parking, the late arrivals, the rolling of suitcases across the street, you know. So that's my big concern, and the safety, too. And I also did see the gentleman doing handstands, and he looked sort of out of it, you know. So it's, it's kind of scary. I've been there 45 years, a long time. So thank you.
Thank you. Lin Yong Weng?
Hello, everyone. I'm the younger brother of Lin Yong Weng, the owner of the 503 Anita Lane. I just be here last week from China all over here. Today, I just want to say, I didn't know anything about how the construction build and how the door open, but I just want to say why my sister want to do the additional second storage in her house. Because my, my sister and her partner, they have a tested two baby last year. They, they tried to transfer the embryo two times, and luckily, the second time, the baby just successfully transferred. So it's a baby boy and a baby girl. So the two infant will come at the end of May, but the doctors said that probably they will come earlier. So probably will be early May this year. That's the main reason they want to, they want to, they want to build the second storage. And then the second thing is that my mother will come here to take care of the baby, and so they do need some, some more space for family use. And that's the main reason. And I talked about the second reason, and every neighbor talking about Airbnb, the issue. Right now, as I know, this is a temporary way to get more income, because right now, my, my sister, she's in East Coast, take care of her parent, her partner, because her partner is in study plan. So they will be back here in June. So at that time, the baby, the two baby, and the couple, and my parents, they will be here. So I think at that time, the Airbnb will be, will be less rental, short rental, I mean. And this is the second thing. And third thing is that we're only at one room in the second story. So it doesn't make any sense to have, spend so much money for just one room for any more Airbnb use, right? And the first thing, and it's also the last one, is that all the activities running Airbnb or, or apply for the new construction are comply with the city law or code, and all the Airbnb they do, they also get permit from the city. They already get approval and pay the money to, for the short rental license. So I think that's what I want to say, talk about.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gina Kimura? No, no, you're done. You had your time. Thank you. Just, please, just... Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Gina Kimura. I live at 605 Geraldine Drive, which is only two doors down from 503. The, I have a question for the, for the building commissioner, because they're talking about a property line, and there is a, an easement of about 10 feet. So I wonder if, are you talking about the, the line where the easement ends, or the property line where the, where the, where the map is? Because if they're extending, if they're extending things to the property line, does that mean where the easement is, where we're not supposed to build anything? So I wonder if they have physically gone over there, because it's true what Robert said, there is a deck that goes right to the fence, and the covered porch goes to the other fence as well. So there's, it's fence-to-fence that they have stuff. So, and there's that easement, too. Okay, that's just, and another thing I wanted to say, too, is that the brother just mentioned that the lady is at the East Coast. So this Airbnb is a no-host Airbnb. And we have concerns about the kind of people that come in there, because we don't know them. I have people like Vivian knocking at my door, thinking it's me, it's us, that, the Airbnb. And I'm on the corner. And also, there's a lot of parking. They park backwards, they pack different ways. I think that she's supposed to provide parking for them, but she's excluding them from that. And so they clog our streets. I have come to home, and the stench of marijuana, I know it's now legal, but last year wasn't. I don't know, maybe it was, but the stench of marijuana on the street, it's, it's really bad. And Vivian's husband and I, you know, we were like, what is that smell? And then we see these people standing right in front of 503, smoking away. It's like, oh, that's where they're coming from. And it's, it's security is just not right. I've been in Millbrae for over 20 years, and the reason why we moved here is because of the, you know, the community, it's quiet, it's a good place to raise kids. And it's no longer. And I'm afraid that, because this lady has this, it seems like it's business for them. This may not be what they present to be. And they do not have a license for Airbnb right now. They do not have it. They have not applied for it. And I just would like to, maybe they can physically go see this place, to, to see that what they're saying and what they're presenting is not true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Fayard, Fayed? Forgive me? Gary? How do you pronounce that for the record?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gary Fayad. I'm a resident at 509 Anita Lane. That's four houses down from the topic of tonight's discussion. I've been a resident there for 13 years. When I moved in, most of the neighbors were 70- and 80-year-old neighbors. They've since passed away. I've watched the neighborhood transform into younger families moving in. My daughter's nine years old. I have several neighbors that have children in grade school that are in, in her peers. My concern with this particular house permit is that it's currently a three-bedroom Airbnb, and there's, which connotes three cars parked in the street. The owners will not allow those cars to be parked in the driveway. So it's three parking spaces taking up street space. As was mentioned earlier, these lots are 50 feet wide, and approximately half of that is a driveway. I park both my cars in the driveway, and I leave the, the road spot empty, and my neighbors use it. The problem comes on trash day, where there's trash cans in the road, and oftentimes, I have to park in the street because the trash cans take up approximately a car length. I do not believe that this house is going to be a single-family residence. I would suspect it's going to become a five-bedroom Airbnb. And that concerns me, because that means five cars parked in the street on an already crowded street. The other issue I have with the parking is oftentimes, not that it's, you know, the visitor's fault, but they often, it's a narrow street, they often will park up on, to the sidewalk. My daughter and I often ride our bikes to Central Park. I have her stay on the sidewalk. And oftentimes, we get to that house, and she can't get past, because the car is parked so far on the sidewalk. It, it just makes for a very unsafe situation. So I take her around the car into the road. So I just want to go on record, I do not support this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Anybody else? Did you fill out a speaker slip? Come on, bring it up. Thank you. Claire Park?
Yes. So I don't want to, you know, take more time, get too late already.
The microphone, please.
Okay.
The mic. This way.
So I live at, you know, 510 Anita Lane, it's across line, you know. But I totally agree with, you know, everybody, you know, what you said here today. And my really big concern is parking, actually, you know, in my area. So I live, you know, since, you know, 2008, I live there in Anita Lane. So pretty much, it's really quiet place, and I feel really safe area, actually, that area. So now is what I felt now, since they, you know, they run Airbnb. So I work at hospital, I'm a nurse, so I know the, especially working in operating room, so I'm taken call, and I call. So I have to go to work, you know, sometimes I got called out, you know, and from the hospital, so I have to go, you know, leave around 11:00 p.m. So when I left, you know, the, my area, in front of my parking area, so when I come back, my space is gone, you know. So it's really, it's, it's hard to park area, and then I have to work, you know, in the morning. So I just need to take a nap around three hours. And what I really want to park in front of my, you know, the house, that's my safe for me to, to work, you know, in the early morning. But a lot of times, you know, the, you know, the Airbnb people, they park in my area, and then sometimes there's no sign, no name, no phone number, they're parking almost three days. So I am almost about to call the, you know, police sometimes like that. So it's really inconvenient and to, to, you know, raise the keys, you know, around that area, since they start, you know, the rental service now. So I really, you know, not happy with their running the Airbnb now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I see one more. One more. That's it. We're going to be done after you. Thank you. Sissy Yen?
Yes.
Get to the microphone, please.
Okay. I'm the resident of 511 Anita Lane. My main concern is the safety, because I have two kids. The reason we move over to Millbrae, because it's a nice community, and we know it's safe for our kids. So my kids, they oftentimes, they play outside of the house and in the front yard, and we actually see strangers. So now we are kind of concerned about the, you know, whenever they are playing outside, we always have to like, oh, come in, you know, you, there might have strangers. And I actually, so that's our main concern. About parking is another thing, but my main thing is I want to continue to live in a safe place, and for our family, yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to close the public comment now. Does the applicant want to come up and respond to anything that they heard?
Yes, thank you. Give me another chance to come into talk. Yeah. Actually, yeah, for the, yeah, I think the labor's mainly concerned about Airbnb activities for the property owners. Actually, I do, I have a very strong recommendation for the owner to get the city approve for their license. If the city deny their license, they can stop the Airbnb activities. I think in this way, most of the labor will satisfy with that. As far as what I'm thinking of that, on the zoning guidelines, if the current decide have any extremely conflict with the, the zoning guidelines or requirements or other things, so if there's no, I hopefully the committee can approve this plan. So right now, the owner, I have their receipt for application for AMB business. If the city deny this application, they will, they can stop it. That's my responding to the labor's. Thank you.
Excuse me. What, what was that? That's your application, and what?
Application for the base Airbnb license from the city of Millbrae.
But then I heard you say approve or not approve.
I, I still, I think it's still under review. So this is the receipt of the applications.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry. We're, we're going to ask the questions now. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him while he's there, standing there? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chen, I was just looking at the Google Maps. I got several questions that I need to ask. I was going through the Google Map. I'm going to ask you one more time on record. The plan that you have submitted, is a correct representation of the current condition of the property?
Yes, the existing plan is the current conditions.
Okay. When I look at the Google Map, on the southwest side of the wall, I see a roof that goes all the way to the property line. What is it?
Yeah, that is the patio template, a tent. Actually, it's the tent, it's not a roof. It's a canvas tent. It's a canvas tent. That tent is behind the garage area.
It actually spans pretty close to the entire length of the southwest wall.
Yeah, but that tent will be removed when the premier approval.
Oh, I understand. Because it's not on the plan. But what I, what I asked you earlier was that your current plan, does that reflect the current condition of the property?
Because that one is not the permanent structure. If the permanent structure I would put on a plan is not permanent one. Even the tank is only some of the metal stick to hold the canvas.
Metal stick?
The metal stick is not formally sit on the ground.
You're saying it's more of an awning?
Yes, more like an awning type of things.
So it's metal stick on top of it is what?
No, the metal stick holding the awnings, basically.
What is the awning made of?
It's the canvas.
Canvas.
Canvas is the closing stuff material. It's not a permanent structure.
And that extends all the way to the property line?
Yes. In the building code and in the building code, this is not considered as a structure.
Okay, second question. What easement do you have in the back? You have a 10-foot easement that spans the width of your lot.
I have been checked with the city's awnings and then there's no easement on this property, I think.
Well, you showed an easement on your plan.
There's a 10-foot easement on the rear property. It's co-terminus with the setback for the rear, which is 10 feet from the property line.
So is my understanding, if there's a certain amount of the property being easemented, for the lack of a better word, right? Does it change the developable area?
No, it's not of a percentage high enough to remove that from the developable area.
Okay.
Only if it exceeds 10% of the property.
Right, here's 10 by 50, so exactly 10%. And what does the code read? It has to exceed 10%?
Correct.
We have a survey done on the property?
The city does not require that we have a survey done unless there is a severe slope or some environmental condition that requires it.
May I?
Yeah.
Tag into that. So I get the setback, that's fine. But he asked about developable area and I'm going to ask about floor area ratio. I mean, what, for the percentage, on the, a recent project on Paramount, we ignored, we pretended the easement wasn't there and allowed them to build something thicker.
Right, because that easement was of a size that it impacted the overall floor area ratio. So if the easement is in excess of 10% of the overall property, that area gets removed, but then it gets added back in so that it doesn't affect the square footage of the existing property. Because the one that we did on Paramount was of such an excessive size that we removed that and it was much greater than 10%.
Okay.
One more thing, Mr. Chen. The northeast wall exception that you're seeking, on the second floor exception?
Yes.
The code required you to have seven foot in addition to the setback on the first floor.
Yes.
Total 12 feet from the property line.
Yes.
You only have nine and a half, according to the plan, is that correct?
Yes, that's, this is why I request for exceptions on that.
Okay, could you have made it at 212?
If I make the 212, that will be make the downstairs dining room reduce the size, it's not able to put six people's dining tables over there. Next to the stair is the dining room, existing dining room.
Excuse me, the dining room is open.
Yeah, it's an open space, but if I put the stair inside the, exist, make like a 12 feet over there from setback from the property line, the stair will occupy half of the dining room. This will make the dining room is functionless.
You're remodeling the whole house, putting a second story up, right?
Yeah, but we still, when we put the stair over there, we still can maintain the function of the dining room.
So my question to you is, can you, can you not make it 12 feet?
On this case, it's no.
You cannot?
You cannot.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before we go into debrief?
Anybody else have questions for him? Right now? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
It's, no questions for him, I don't think. But I would tend to think that rather than going back and using up more space of the ground, that, that if he's going to go up, he might as well make it a little bit bigger upstairs. And make it, I think this does not need exceptions. I think that if he rearranged the house, he could achieve what he wants to achieve without us having to grant exceptions. Especially on both sides. There is just a lot of room to work with. And I think it would make for a much more usable house. I mean, he's moving the wall out, making those two rooms bigger.
Right. Staff has worked extensively with this, with this applicant. And, and we believe that this is the best alternative that, that we are capable of designing. We do have, to be conscious of the coverage. So even though they, the, the lot coverage, so they are, they are getting close to that threshold of 50%.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why doesn't he just put that room upstairs? Since he's having to build up anyway and that would leave all that other space downstairs.
Well, because we're, we're bound by the side setback restrictions. So they, they don't have that much room to build upstairs.
They wouldn't have to even go back. They wouldn't, he's trying to put too much stuff downstairs. And asking for exceptions. I, I think that if he really worked on it better, it would make for a much better flow of the house. He wouldn't need the exceptions.
Come up, please. Explain your thinking, please.
Thank you. Actually, based on the calculations, we have a 5,000 square feet lot. For the ground floor addition, including the garage, the maximum we can go, 2,500 square feet. But because of fire ratio and the lot coverage, we are limited on that space. So you feel minus 400 plus a square feet of the garage, that only leaving space on the ground floor. If I maximize it, it's only 2,100 square feet. That is not able to meet the current expand of family members' requirement, demand for the living space. So this is why we have to go for second floor designs. And on the second floor, if we go fully with the city code requirements, the second floor space will only able to build like 10 by 10, which is not able to be like a in Millbrae's, Millbrae's life living style. This kind 10 by 10 of a second floor is not really a good spacing for a family to live in there.
We have approved many, many projects on 5,000 square feet lots. Where we, you just need to put more upstairs and less downstairs. Okay?
So you mean we can expand more spacing upstairs and reduce the downstairs? That, that, we can change the design on that. If the committee is really interested on that, we can change it that.
Because you've got a lot of space at the top of the stairs.
Yeah.
The bedroom is quite large. And you've got room to go back a little bit more. And then you wouldn't be getting close to the people on, to the side of the house. You could leave it the way, I, I think you can design a much better house.
Yeah. I'm very confident you, we can go more space on second floor and reduce, reduce the ground floor space. We can do it.
And then that way you wouldn't need exceptions. You wouldn't be encroaching on anybody close to them.
I, I believe on the second floor addition, we still need exception from the committees. We still need an exception. The only change will be more space on upstairs instead of ground floor.
Right.
Yeah.
But you may be able to design it, so.
Is able to design that.
At least you may need an exception on one side, but certainly not on both sides.
Based on the house's condition, did it will require both side requirement?
And you're doing so much work that it would make sense for a better flow on the whole design of the house. I'm just not comfortable with the two exceptions. The windows, looking at your next door neighbor, two large windows.
Is the neighbor on that side of the house a one-story or a two-story home?
One-story. A two-story? Oh, yeah.
On the, on the window, on the window side?
On the window side is one-story.
No, I think it's.
No, it's a one-story.
They have a two-story house on both side.
On both sides?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the labor conforming to me.
Well, it's, it's not a two-story.
It's a split level, isn't it?
It's a split level, I think.
It's a split.
No, it's two-story.
On the right-hand side, there's a two.
Both side, both side.
On both sides?
Both side they have two-story.
I drove by.
Two stories or split level?
Yeah.
More questions for him right now?
One of the concern for, for a quick recommendation, if I get the second story is a bigger size, there will, the shadow will probably impact the labor a little bit more than right now the current design. This is one of my concerns on that.
Do you mind just staying there while we have, while we discuss? We might have more questions for you. Do you mind if you just stay right there?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Are you put together? Commissioner Wong?
I think there's two issues here. One is the features of the house and concerns of the design for privacy and windows and access and flow. You know, we're all, I'm for upgrading homes and making them more beautiful and, you know, making them more accommodating for the residents and to provide more enjoyment for the family. And there's no, there's issues about the design of the house for development, developing it and providing upgrades for a single-family house. And then there's the second issue about, you know, use as an Airbnb rental or a short-term rental. That's a separate issue, actually. I'm not sure about, you know, it's, it's one of the issues that we really, all right, I have, I have a short timer here. But I haven't, you know, so far in my, what, five months, four months here, I haven't addressed any of these issues about Airbnb. So now we're getting into issues about design of homes for short-term rental and, and, you know, multiple residences. So to separate out these two issues, the first issue is about the design and the flow of the house. And one of my main concerns was looking at access to the rooms and seeing how they would flow and making sure that a family living there now or in the future, that there would be a good interaction with the different rooms, going into a common living room. And that there would be flow in the house, that people, people would use it as a single-family residence. And then the issue about the second-story windows give me a big concern. I don't know if a large window is needed to light up a minibar area. So one of the issues I would have is just making sure that there's privacy concerns. I'd like to see, you know, other architects and submissions from other residential upgrades. They submitted a plan, a plan view that shows the neighboring house and the alignment of the windows so that we can, we can see if those windows are lined up with each other and making sure that there's, privacy issues are addressed. But what I noticed that with the design of this house also is that the flow, it looks like there's more flow to the back bedrooms. Because when I was asking about the entrances into the house, if, that all the bedrooms would be accessible from inside the house, but the, the back rooms, they have their own separate entrance. And there's two small decks on the north side of the house. And it's almost as if they're separate platforms with separate entrances, almost like two entrances to two living spaces. As far as the short-term rental issues.
Yeah. Can, can I just?
We can't.
I mean, this is a design review. It's, so that's not actually part of our discussion, I don't think. Staff, do you want to confirm?
Yeah, so you're, you're right, that, that is a, is a separate issue. But I will let the commission know that we are aware of that issue. Earlier this year, we sent out, the city sent out a number of letters to known operators asking that they come in and get legal permission to operate the, the short-term rental units that the city was aware of. We work with a vendor that continues to look to all the different resources that we have through Airbnb and other platforms. So we'll be continuing to work through code compliance to make sure that any operator that is operating needs to do so legally with, with a short-term rental permit. And that means also getting a business license and paying back TOT taxes. So one, one condition that you'll note in the staff report is that any issuance of a building permit for this particular design review would be incumbent upon getting that, those legal permits, so. But, but you're right, they are separate matters. And what's before you this evening is the design review aspects of the request.
Thank you.
So going back to the design of the home, then, and the flow. So the two issues are the, the flow and the access, the setback, the windows and the privacy. The setback gives me a concern because even if it was a normal enclosed first floor, the setback on the second story would be required to be six feet from the, the first floor, bottom of the first floor. So now it's four feet, doesn't quite meet that six feet. And can staff remind me on the requirements for parking spaces for single-family residences? When, what would trigger the third parking?
An addition of 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, an addition with a total of 3,500 square.
Okay, so it's not based on number of bedrooms?
No.
I have.
Go ahead.
So am I missing the page that has this house in relation to the windows for the next-door neighbors? Am I missing that page or am I just not seeing?
No, it's not shown on the, on this particular plan. But we've had several iterations of the plans. And on previous plans, I believe that that has been shown.
Well, that page is extremely important. And once again, I really strongly encourage you. I just don't feel comfortable about the way it is right now. And I drove by there today. And I think I, some of your north elevations and some of these, they're just kind of, I'm having a problem quite, being that I saw it and now I'm looking at it here. I think you could do a lot better for your client. So I would want to see something totally different. And make sure that when you bring it back, it, it shows the windows of the people next door.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Because they, they don't, yeah. I may be the only one that feels that way, but I'm just not comfortable with this way it is.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
I've got seven recommendations. Number one, I'd like to see a survey done. A survey that will. A survey that will clearly demonstrate the lot size and the easement that is being recorded. We're at 10% as being documented here. Over 10% would incumbent the property from having more developed area. I think being at 10%, we cannot just take everything at face value, right? So we need to have a confirmation. So I would recommend a survey being done on the next go around before we consider approval. Second, the site plan and the existing plan, it's not a correct representation based on what I view the Google map. I would want to make sure that the next time you submit your plan, that the plan clearly shows what is on site, temporary or permanent structure. I mean, you can call it a temporary, but I see a structure there. I want to make sure that your plan clearly documents what's on there, whether you intend to keep it or demolish it. Even if you have a shed on it, I want to see it. Okay? I also believe that you can redesign your floor plan in such a way that would not require the exceptions. I mean, it would require more design work on your part. It could possibly require more construction on your client's part, but you can redesign the house in such a way that does not require the exception. You've got plenty of flexibility. Both neighbors on your left and your right have second stories. Just be sensitive to your design. You could be creative and with proper design on the sense, with sensitivity to your neighbors, proper screening, proper window placements, a moderate height, and you can preserve light and air for your neighbor. You can design a good second story addition that will fit well within the neighborhood. Number five, I need a better drawn plan with grid lines that lines up with the existing and the proposed floor plans, with properly lines clearly indicated on all plans. Color would be nice to show what the facade and what the sign and what the view is going to look like. I think you can do a better job with it. Make sure you demonstrate on your northeastern deck is properly permanent. This is something that you need to do as an architect. Clearly demonstrate that your property, your, your existing deck on the northeast side of your property is, is permanent because you're building it with combustible material. Make sure your laundry is not in the side yard area. Noise could be an issue for your neighbor. I don't want to see laundry machines on the outside of your property. As to stand, I'm not currently ready to support this project as designed. I'm sorry.
That was a clear set of direction from one commissioner. We have consensus on that? Is there anything else other, I mean, you say just start over?
Yeah. I really feel that you can design a much better project that will flow better and I have concerns about building and building and building and eliminating the environment because once you start putting a cement floor there and building, we're, we're losing that. And so I think that is important for the environment to not continue to build. So I really think that you can do something that will benefit both your client and will also benefit the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to be clear also that if you do come back with a, a design for single family residential, you know, I'd like to see a lot more flow and interaction in the rooms, the common areas that look more like a true family gathering residential. There's issues about, when I look in review of some of these designs, always look to see how people will use it and if it will be a future conversion to an in-law unit and if it's future in-law conversion, then it should be stated that it's going to be a future in-law conversion. Other than that, I suggest looking at the Airbnb regulations and reviewing those requirements if they are using it for that. There are a lot of requirements for use of the property, including parking, designated parking for those guests. I'm all for, you know, there's a lot of pressure on our communities to provide more housing and, and more units so that there's more usable residential places for people in the Bay Area. But I would suggest that if we, you know, they're looking, if the owner's looking at permanent rental units or even temporary rental units, that they look for properties with, you know, zone properly for multi-residential units. It's just, you know, I just want to be very explicit about that because I don't want you to go through a lot of redesign and so forth and I still see that it appears to not be designed for single family residents and, and something that would add to the neighborhood as a single family house.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, no. I'm in agreeance that, that redesign is, is necessary, but I want to say one thing that I don't believe it's our job to tell a family how a house is going to function or flow. That's up to them. I see a living room attached to a dining room, close to the kitchen, and I see a family room in another spot. That seems like a perfectly normal configuration to me. So I don't believe it's our job to tell you how to flow the house. I just want to say that out loud, but this needs a bit of work.
Thank you.
Okay? So. Choices for us?
Sure, choices. So obviously you have the staff recommendation before you. That does not sound like that's what the commission's in support of this evening. You could vote to deny the request or you also could vote to continue this to another date and let the applicant take the feedback that they've heard tonight and, and resubmit.
Do we have to pick a date or can we, a theoretical? Nope.
At this point, I wouldn't recommend that just because we would want to get the plans back in and make sure that they are meeting all the, the comments that we heard this evening.
So are you okay with that?
Yes, sure.
Okay, and a date we'll figure out later?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we prepare recently, we will consult with the city staff, planning staff, and then confirming it's okay to go, then we'll come into schedule another time.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the project design review to allow the construction of a second story residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second setback, second floor size setback of an existing single story residence in a single family residential all in zoning district for property 503. Any delay until further notice.
I can go ahead and second that motion. I just have one question of staff. Was it important or did we need to read all of this for a continuance?
I think, I think you're well, you, we've opened up the public hearing, we've closed the public hearing, so I think we're fine.
Okay. So I second the motion.
Votes? Motion carries, four zero. We'll see you in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody need a break or anything? Okay, can we take a five, five minute break? Seriously, be back in the room at 8:30. Thank you.[1111.48]
Okay, thank you. We're back now. On to 1135 Oakwood Drive. A design review permit to allow a single-story addition to a single-family residence and a conditional use permit to allow construction within an existing non-conforming front yard setback located in the single-family residential zoning district. Sam, staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. This project is located at 1135 Oakwood Drive between Brookside Lane and Mosswood Lane in the Meadows subdivision within the northwestern portion of Millbrae. The property is a 5,040 square foot interior lot, single-family residential zone residence with a two-car attached garage. The existing residence is a single-story home with three bedrooms and two bathrooms, with a living room, with a fireplace, dining room, kitchen, hallway, den, rear-covered patio, and attached two-car garage. The attached two-car garage is located within the existing non-conforming 15-foot front yard setback. There is an existing front yard landscaped area consisting of decorative rocks, brick, bark, drought-tolerant plants, and ground cover with a permeable paver driveway. The existing roof has a 412 roof pitch. The proposed project will add a single-story new bedroom and bathroom adjacent to the living room at the front of the residence. The new construction will incorporate exterior materials that will match the existing front exterior materials of the front of the building. To accommodate the addition, the existing fireplace adjacent to the living room would be removed. The existing open kitchen, living and dining room, dining den, front entryway, and three rear bedrooms with two bathrooms, rear-covered patio, and two-car garage will remain unchanged. The project includes a new front yard landscape containing plantings of Douglas iris, dichondra, silver falls, and a decorative river rock border. The existing permeable paver driveway will remain. This is the project data, information on the project. The existing lot coverage is 42% at 1,974 square feet, and it's proposed to go to 48% at 2,277 square feet. And the FAR will go from 2,000, or 1,974 square feet to 2,277 square feet. It will have a two-car garage. The garage area will basically remain the same. And the, I'll proceed to, I'll talk about the encroachment. The new bedroom and bathroom area that's going to be attached to the living room will encroach five feet into the front, the front setback, and that requires a conditional use This is the site plan. The area in red indicates the portion of the addition. As you can see, the existing garage is located here, and it has an existing setback of 15 feet. So the portion that's going to be the addition is located here. This is a five-foot portion that's going to be encroaching into the 20-foot front yard setback. However, it's not encroaching any further than the existing line of the garage. And this is allowed under our code with a request of a conditional use permit. This is the proposed floor plan, indicating the new bedroom and the new bathroom. Attached to the living room, kitchen, dining room, you have the two-car garage here and the other bedroom behind the garage there. And this is the entry. These are the existing elevations. Existing north elevation, existing rear elevation west, existing left side elevation south, and this is the front elevation, showing the chimney. This is the area here that the, the new bedroom and bathroom would be added to. Here we have the proposed elevations, and this shows the newly constructed area of the new bedroom and bathroom area and the new entryway. The required findings are indicated here. For design review, the architectural landscaping and general appearance, the proposed building or structure grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The project complies with all applicable development regulations. The project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from the principal rooms of a residence, and the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city or will impair the desirability, investment, or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. As mentioned before, the applicant is requesting to lengthen the wall to create the front living area of the bedroom and the bathroom, encroaching five feet into the 20-foot front setback, but it is not further encroaching into the existing non-conforming 15-foot setback. And this is allowed with approval of a conditional use permit. This is the conditional use permit request, and under finding D1, this project meets the definition of a project that will not, under the circumstance of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, and morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing and working in that neighborhood of such proposed use, and it will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property improvements in the neighborhood of such proposed use. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a design review permit to allow a single-story addition to a single-family residence and a conditional use permit to allow construction within an existing non-conforming front yard setback located in the single-family residential zoning district at 1135 Oakwood Drive, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and we have the applicant here also to answer questions about the, the project.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything for Sam right now?
Did staff observe any of the other existing properties, looking at them right now? Is there any other nearby homes with this type of?
Yes. So staff did research, look at other properties along the street, and along the same side of the street to the north, there are several homes, about four to five of them, that have the same similar building footprint with the garage encroaching into the front 15-foot, or front 20-foot front setback. So it's a similar design, and they have that, that infill also that was done to, to sort of create more space in the front yard area. So there are examples of other, of other homes along the, the street that have this.
Thank you. Applicant?
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Wait, I want to read it upside down? 2.0. Let's get it, let's get it right side up. There we go. Next page, page down.
Good evening. Ken Ibera, applicant architect. Hopefully, this will be swifter. Been in the business a long time, and clients came to me, homeowners came to me and said they wanted to infill the, the front yard. Not a common request, but they want to, you know, build the, an addition for, for, you know, for the family member. I made it clear that I, assuming you can build as close as, you know, in line with the front of the garage. So that's how we sort of went with the, with the plan. Got involved in an agreement, and once I started doing the, the measuring, the inspection of the house, and did the ever-present look on the parcel maps, realized that in order to have a 20-foot setback for these properties, the garage would have to be set back 20, 25 feet, 24 feet from the sidewalk. Property line is set four feet behind the sidewalk. So I proceeded to measure eight houses along each side, along the same side of the, of this property and across the street. And all the way to Brookside, these, these plans were all less than 24 feet from, you know, from the sidewalk. So they all encroached. However, the new two, the two-story homes that proceeded south of this property were built at a different time and were, you know, and they, and they had a lot deeper setbacks in the front. So these homes are all, and they're, they seem pretty prevalent up in the Meadows. So I would say that there's a lot of non-conformity for these homes. They do have, you know, 20-foot driveways, but the property line being four feet in, they do not, they cannot meet the 20-foot front setback. First, we were just talking, and the homeowner said, well, let's, let's take five feet off. Well, that would leave a 10-foot room, a 10-foot by 21-foot room. So it wasn't really feasible, and then we found, we found the, the section in the, in the ordinance to, you know, to try for, for the use permit, and, and we comply with all of that. So here we are, and we've had, looked through the staff report, and the conditions are all, we're in favor of, and all of the homeowners that we did public notice with have, have no, have no objections to the project. That's all I have.
Any questions for him right now?
It's just interesting, you pointed out that additional property line is four-foot setback from the sidewalk. What do the, I haven't walked the neighborhood, usually I do. What do the homeowners usually do with that? Are they allowed to landscape there, or what's, what's in that easement?
It's not, it's not distinguishable. It's, the yard goes all, you know, the, the property goes all the way to the sidewalk. There's, there's the invisible property line that is four feet in from the sidewalk. And you can only determine that either from a survey or by measuring the actual right-of-way, which is the street, curb, gutter, sidewalks, and additional width.
So to clarify, then, your building structure is, is 19 feet from?
Exactly, 19 feet, one inch. So we actually have a 15-foot, one-inch setback.
Well, we all learned something. They always look like 20 feet to us, and I have seen a lot with the front coming forward.
Yeah, and Sam, Sam did mention that the, the adjacent properties, such as 1139 and 1149, have older additions where they have done infill of rooms into that front yard. Across the street, only, there's a newer addition of 1146, and it, it has, it has a couple more feet of, of setback, so it's about a 17-foot setback.
And you will be re-landscaping?
Yes. I, I even called out all the plants.
I saw that.
Mr. Ibera, have you gone through the thought process and the design process of actually putting that room in the back of the house instead of the front of the house?
Through the chair, I'd like to address that. That was one thing we looked at, that staff looked at as far as design. And looking at the, the back of the house, there is a 1,000-square-foot open space requirement, and there's not that much space in the back to actually add, like, create a usable, large enough bedroom. It didn't quite make sense from there. It would look like it wasn't going to meet the 1,000-square-foot rear open space requirement. So that was one thing that we looked at is, that was one option, is to see if they could do it, do the addition at the back, or the other, do a second floor, right?
Or, or without, without blocking the kitchen and dining room.
That's correct, yeah, and, and that would have changed the circulation of the house, yeah.
How far is the rear wall to the property line? 18 feet?
Correct.
And the width of the lot is 56.7?
So we have about three feet from the back, from the very back of the house to?
So the back, Sam, so, I'm sorry, staff, the rear yard open space requirement is 1,000 square feet?
Yes, that's correct. It's, so the, within the rear one-third of the lot, there needs to be at least 1,000 square feet of open space. So in the, in the rear portion, just the rear portion from the, the 18 feet, if you just would count that area, you would have 1,021, and then the small portion on the sides. But that's, that's not going to be too much square footage there, so.
You mean the covered patio area?
Right, right, like, you count, it's the rear one-third of the lot, so that includes the, the open space on the sides, but that's not very much space there. Really, the, the majority of the open space is in the back, and that's, that's right now existing 1,021 square feet. So they're right, you know, on the edge there. That, right, the, the covered patio, the patio could be, could have been like an option to maybe build a, a bedroom there, but the applicant expressed to me that the owners did not want to, they wanted to keep that patio space and that open space as part of their backyard. They didn't want to lose that.
So it was a design decision to put them in the front instead of put them in the back? Is that correct, Mr. Ibera?
It was a design and homeowner's decision.
Okay.
Very well.
Anything else right now? Okay.
Oh, in the staff report, there's, I should have a question for the staff, but in the staff report, there has an existing first-floor south-side setback of three feet existing, and then it says there's a proposed of 13 to 24 feet. Can you explain that change?
I missed. That is not, that's an error.
That's not right.
Yeah, they're, they're both five feet.
Sam, in the chart?
I missed that.
Existing is?
Staff will make that correction. The, the both sides should be five feet.
Even though the existing's three?
No, the, the, sorry, the existing is, is five foot eight. On the, what do we have here on the? On the south side, and five feet on the north side.
And the proposed?
Says three.
I think it's going to be the same.
The proposed will be the same also, right?
South side is not three feet currently?
South side is five foot eight.
It's five? Okay.
The proposed will be no change, correct?
That's correct. The proposal will be no change.
So why did the maximum building height go up for the front? The design of the front?
That's to the roof pitch. Yep, to the, yeah, the new roof pitch. To the peak of the roof.
Is that all for him for now?
It's the same pitch though, right? Yeah, 412.
All right. Are we done with him for now? Yes? Okay. Do we have any speaker slips? No? No one wants to speak on this? Okay, that's closed then. Discussion? We'll let you know if we have any more questions.
I do have a quick question for staff. So, since, Mr. Fielding? Since they're proposing to build into the front setback required area, so it's not an exception that they're seeking, it's really just a CU?
No, for, for, exceptions are only used for second-floor setback exception requests, but we don't, we don't have like an exception that's allowed for a first-floor or ground-level setback exception. It's a conditional use permit. So that's why this, this project is requesting a conditional use permit to allow that encroachment. And there's no exception for ground-floor setbacks. In the, yeah, in the front, sorry. In the, in the front, there's no, no exceptions request, allowed. So it, it requires a conditional use permit.
So then what's the condition on the use permit?
The, the condition is to allow an encroachment of five feet into the 20-foot front yard setback.
They've got the findings.
Yeah, and that's to match the, the existing length, or setback of the garage, existing non-conforming garage of 15 feet.
I think it'll add to the house. I've seen many, many houses in the Meadows, and it actually looks better when the front comes out, so I, I have seen it a lot. So I'm, I'm prepared to approve the project. Any big comments or anything? So I make a motion that we approve the project. Subject, design review permit to allow a single-story addition to a single-family residence, and the conditional use permit to allow construction with an existing non-conforming front yard setback located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district.
I'll second that.
Your votes?
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
Before we go forward, sorry. Couple things. In general, I think we should encourage design from applicant that to be as conforming to our code as possible. Frankly, in, in, in general, I'm not a huge fan of just granting exceptions or conditional use permits, you know, on a regular basis. We should try to adhere to our design guidelines and, to the extent possible. In this particular case, you know, there are, there are design options that could be implemented to achieve the design that you needed, and to accommodate the space that you wanted to add to it without necessarily asking for a CU. It could be done. The, it's a design decision, it was an owner's decision, and I respect that. The good thing in this case is that, you know, seems like up and down the block, there has already been implementing that exception, and seems like owner-neighbors are okay with it. Okay? But I just want to make that absolutely clear, that in general, we should not just sort of grant these things on a, on the fly here.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah. So, so the particular finding in this case, you know, if anybody want to use it as a precedent later on, is that, what is the percentage of houses around that block that has this exception implemented? Sam?
So there's, there's about four, four, several homes, like four to five homes that have that design footprint, that encroachment into the 20-foot front yard setback.
And it's not unique to Oakwood. It's all over the Meadows. If we went up there and encountered them all, maybe dozens.
Yes, yeah, in the subdivision, yeah. There are other examples on, on some of the other streets.
And I, I wasn't really sure if they were additions or if they were built like that.
They're additions.
But it must have all been additions, somebody said. But there's quite a few.
So I just want to make that comment on record here. I'll be able to go along with this on these condition that, first of all, I see a heavy precedence already being implemented up and down the block, and I emphasize the word "heavy," and we have unanimous support from all the neighbors surrounding it, and we've got six and, six and O, right, and all the neighbors that are okay with it. So I just want to be absolutely careful with going forward here, you know, on these, granting the CU, because CU are designed to be somewhat discretionary, and, you know, we need to be very careful when we exercise these sort of discretionary power on this commission. commission here. So, anyhow, with these two conditions, you know, being unanimous support from all the neighbors surrounding it and heavy implementation of such an exceptions up and down the block, I'd be happy to go along with this.
It's good to elaborate and make it clear. Also, agree with Anders, and then also, I see one more factor also to allow for a conditional use permit is that it has that additional five-foot property line setback from the sidewalk. So, the green belt area wouldn't just be the 15 feet, but actually, plus 19 feet, which is approximately much closer to the requirement.
Okay. One more time, your votes? I think we're good? Pass is 4-0. There's a 10-day right of appeal.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you.
New business?
Sorry, I'm sorry, staff, I want to make sure those comment that I just made earlier on record, make sure it's properly documented on the notes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome.
New business? We have none. Staff updates?
So, we continue to be very busy, and I want to say to the planning commission, thank you again for your willingness to meet on special meetings and just being sort of nimble, I think, with the larger TOG projects. When we're able to get through those projects, whenever that may be, we'll move on to some more pressing items as well, such as talking about design guidelines and talking about maybe some process as it relates to single-family home additions and that type of thing. So, I'm looking forward to bringing a number of policy-related items to you as well, as well as the general plan update and the specific plan update that will be coming fast and furious over the next few months. So, I just want to say thanks again for being available for those special meetings.
I think we're all anxious to get some of this stuff finished.
Would that count as a commission comment? Have we moved on?
Are we supposed to have any discussions on this, or is it just for foot-for-thoughts or foot-for-reading?
From San Mateo County, huh?
Mr. Meister? I'm sorry. Is it just for us to go home and read? The second-story inspirations and sort of ADU-type thing? We're not supposed to discuss here tonight, right?
No, it was just information. I think 21 Elements, who kind of works as sort of a de facto policy group for the county, has put together some updated manuals on accessory dwelling units, so it's one people to have that.
Any other comments? Announcements?
Had a great time at the Lunar New Year Festival. It's probably over 1,000 people in the parade alone and, what, 30, 35 to 40 booths. It was a great time, great turnout. Welcome everyone to future events. A lot of different people, different backgrounds, diversity, inclusiveness, just like the St. Patrick's Day, Columbus Day parades. We're getting on the map with this, this was great. Then, a shout-out to Peninsula Youth Orchestra. They had a program last night, find talents, young musicians up and down the peninsula. They had a concert last night, and they'll have one more coming up in May. And then, also for my booth, my group's booth, San Bruno Chinese Church, our neighbors to the north, had a lot of fun. Thanks, thank you, at the Lunar New Year Festival.
And Commissioner Feng did a great job.
MC.
What, you were introducing everyone for the events?
I hope I didn't upset anybody or say anybody's official title wrong or anything. I'm glad it all went well. I mean, it's a great event. You know, Millbrae, given our diversity, you know, being able to celebrate Chinese Lunar New Year the way it did, it's an exceptional effort, really fun. I'm really proud to be this, part of this community here. Everybody participated, and it's such a, it's such a great teamwork all around, right? I mean, otherwise, it wouldn't have, never have happened. You know, with the turnout that we had at, in a rainy day such as this, it's really exceptional. I think we all deserve a big hands to ourselves, putting it together. And also, glad to see all of our participation from everyone on this commission. I think I see all the commissioners. I see Commissioner Joe, Chair Davis, as well as Commissioner Quibb, and your husband as well. So, you know, we look so forward to continue to having more of these events, you know, in Millbrae.
All right. Little?
Drizzle.
Every once in a while.
You can catch the entire parade on MCTV Facebook page.
Yeah. All right. I think we're done. We're adjourned?
All right.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.